I pray to God, thank you so much. Good day, Lord, and thank you for the grace we received. We ask you to send us, continue to send us more. Lord, I ask you to be with our country and our world. We've got stuff going on, and I ask that you see over it, bring the people back to you. Forgive our recent shortcomings on our part, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored in Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, America, one indivisible.
We're getting started. It's time to be personal with business before the court, not scheduled on the agenda. Make speak to the court. No formal election can be taken on these items at this meeting. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes.
I have nothing bad.
Okay. He wanted, he wanted 10 minutes.
If I can't get 10 minutes, I'm not even in the room. You're out.
All courts may give you 10 minutes.
All right, we'll go ahead and move into interprecinct project scheduling and staffing. Anything?
Just trying to get it done.
Working on it.
We're having trouble.
But we're working.
I believe in that.
All right, we'll go ahead and move into departmental budget review. Everybody ready? Okay, we're just gonna start at the top. So with the differences between, and remember, this is all preliminary. This is the very beginning. These are the requests by all of the different departments. They come from each other departments, not from anybody else except for a few things that I caught that we need to discuss at some point.
Also, as y'all are looking through it, there's been two errors, keying errors. I did this from home Thursday, trying to get all the books ready for, to get to y'all on Friday. So I was trying quickly to go through them. I've already made those corrections, but if y'all see any other ones, that's why I put the copies of the department requested one behind it, so y'all can see what they're requesting. And then if you see an error in there, just bring it to my attention. I will fix it. I already fixed those too. But I am human, so.
Yes, absolutely.
Absolutely.
I did see a couple that I changed in there.
Will you let me know what they are, so I can fix it anyway?
Yes, ma'am, I will, I will. So this is very preliminary. So in my budget, I requested additional for travel. I'm taking that out, the additional. The state, there are four that the state supplement will change. They changed in legislation, all judges and all prosecutors. It's a different percentage, so that's gonna change, and that will directly affect all the fringe that goes along with that. So my budget will change a little bit there. And then office supplies, we need to restock the copy paper that comes up off our budget, and that's about $600. Commissioners, Court, any questions online? Okay. Commissioners, Court, these are all increases or decreases in the budget. So that's the way I've done all of this. And this red down the middle is all of the decreases throughout this, from last year's budget to this year's budget for a total of $1.990 in differences. That's across the board. Going back to Commissioners, Court, an increase in 500, increasing two auto expense, a decrease, increasing three auto expense. County Clerk, any questions on Commissioners, Court? Okay, County Clerk, Melody's requesting full-time employee, an increase in education and training, an increase in equipment, and with full-time employee comes the medical insurance, a total of $99,000. So Melody, do you wanna talk towards?
Okay. I'm assuming they got copies of all of this? Okay. So y'all saw my statement on that. The reason behind education and training, I just upped a little bit, just because of the cost of travel. My dues, I upped because they were in there for $50, and they actually are $150. One got left off somewhere. Equipment, I'm gonna try to start purchasing, as we, y'all talked about wanting to get everybody's computers up today, so I'm gonna try to get a little extra in there to start getting everybody's computers going. Same thing with equipment and other equipment. I don't think I upped them much. I think we went on those. They were 1,500. I went to $2, $500 on that one and 300 on the other one. So it wasn't much on those. Now, when it comes to full-time employee, I've cut back on my employees the last several years. I've agreed to try with two full-time people and one part-time, and it's just, it's not, my people are drowning. We're struggling with recording, guardianships, probates, keeping up with everything that we do have. It is, it's a struggle to keep everything going, especially staffing, if anybody's out on track, training, if anybody's out sick. One person can't do it in there by themselves. They just can't. So, like I said, I did many, many years ago, I took one out because we were struggling, for the county was struggling. I was afraid the Commissioners were gonna start laying off people, so I just didn't hire somebody back. I did that again last year. I just didn't hire somebody back. And now it's gotten down to where it's a bad situation in the office to find time for people to do what they need to do and to be there when they need to be there and everything else. So that is why I'm requesting a full-time person back.
Nobody want?
Two. I have two. I have two part-time and then the one, two full-time and the one part-time.
Didn't you say when you was in, when I met with you, that your part-time, you pay for already?
Yes, I, if, that's what it takes, and that's what we have to do for me to be able to get a full-time. I think I have enough in my records management money that I could probably, because I think it's $26,000 we spend on the, on the part-time.
Twenty-seven-four, about.
Yeah. I think I have enough in that fund to cover that out of my records management. That is a legal expense for records management money. It's not taxpayer money. It's collected from fines and fees and things like that, so. And then I think the judge has given me another thing that was a recommendation from the judicial because of the extra loads. You'll look at the very last paragraph on that, the extra loads that are being added to the clerks. They are recommending that the clerks get more help.
Since moving up here, we've been able to work a little closer, not a little, but a lot closer with the clerk's office. And Melody, Melody and I had a discussion just last week about the workload that they have. Recordings is a full-time job. The person that's doing recordings also does all the probates and guardianships and whatever else.
Civil, yeah. Civil, some of the civil.
Yeah. It's gotten to the point where it's just too much for one person. It needs to be separated to some extent. I think recordings and then probates and guardianships, those, probates and guardianships, those rules change all the time. And so what Melody and I discussed is Brandy helping out for now, until we get everything straightened out and lined back up and headed in a positive direction on that. They're not in bad shape, they're just, we need to work on those, especially with all the changes. So I, I'm not opposed to a full-time employee through the clerk's office to separate that out. And then, you know, thinking on that, with, this letter came yesterday, basically from the administrative judge that says, and I'm not saying that just because he says this that we should, but we're seeing, we're seeing a big increase.
Office court administration is throwing so many reports on us. We're having to go back and track every civil case, probate case, guardianship case, how many, when it's filed, how long it's on their docket, how long, how fast it gets disposed. And we're having to go back, we had to go back this last time to about, we had to go back, they started back, they wanted us to go back to the very beginning, and a lot of the clerks said, "We can't do that. There's no way." We don't, there's, probates never get closed. It's almost impossible to go back and track that. So they did give us about a three or four-year look back, that we had to go back and pull all that. And then now we gotta do it annually. Every year, we gotta track every bit of that. So it's just more reports that they're putting on the clerk, which that pulls me away from helping them out in the main part, if I'm out there doing reports.
Also, it's not legislation, it's bureaucracy that makes up all these rules and tells you what to do. And they have grown over the last four, five years, and lots more that you were required to do. It's not just her, but the district.
District.
District Judge, County Judge.
Boy, it's happening across the board. Department, tax assessor, continuously, all of you, all of us get more and more to do. They, we don't have any property taxes in the state.
Really? Right, yeah.
But they're pushing more and more out of the state and down to departments to do and take care of, and so.
And they have full access to all of this information. They could do it theirself. They could pull it and do it from the reports we already seen, but they don't wanna do that. They want us to do additional reports.
Yes.
You gotta have a report, you say you did a report.
Yes. Let me turn on the fans, please.
I was wrong, I thought it'd be Jen. Be one or six?
Like, one or two, just like.
Move some air.
Please, thank you.
Come on. So any concerns with County Clerk's?
If you'll play through, yeah, part-time out there, I don't recall.
And I think one line, I have like 600 and about 500, something thousand.
That's the, the big records management one, yeah.
I think that would be, what would that be? Yeah, we can't, and we have glasses on.
I don't know what that is.
Twenty-two fifty a month, I definitely collect. I mean, even if I didn't have that already stored saved up, I collect that much easily.
So you're taking your, you're taking your part-time?
Yeah, I'm gonna pay the part-time out of my records management.
Any more thoughts on County Clerk? Election Administrator, asking for a full-time employee and keep a part-time employee, increase in office supplies by 500, records up $28, education and training, another $1,000 travel expense, another 500 election expense. We do have an election coming up in '26, another $8,631. And then if you have a full-time employee, you have the medical insurance. That is the amount. So, Lori?
Well, with the legislative changes, I think that's legislative changes, we've got 20 bills that they're amending or adding, and then two audit bills that they're putting in there. I don't have the exact election law book yet. It, I won't get it till July or August, when we go to the training. I need a full-time to be able to, because now we're gonna have to, we would have the three-day break between early voting and Election Day.
Trying to change that.
Yeah. Now I go from the last day of early voting, straight into Election Day, the next day. So, and with us being, gonna be 2026, we're gonna have a lot more hours, and I just can't do the part-time person. I really need the full-time employee. And to be able to do that, there, I don't, you don't get very good choices, I should say, for part-time, and they don't wanna stay long because it's 30 hours a week, and I start them at $13 an hour. I mean, I can only go up to 15, so I want to be able to, you know, have that cushion, but, and I would be willing to get rid of the part-time and just hire it as needed, temporary, if we're out of the office with elections or schooling or whatever. But there's, I mean, I need help to be in full compliance with the growing legislative requirements. So that part-time would go down. I think we said like 3,000, maybe 3,000 for as needed, temporary.
So a full-time with the benefits and the medical insurance is total of $96,000. And then if you remove the part-time, 28,400. You're looking at a total increase of $68,000.
Could you get back to part-time?
Do what?
Could you get back to part-time?
Well, I only got one application for a part-time, so it's kinda hard because no one wants to put in their applications. They don't want it. And the one girl that did, she's a college student, so.
Work around her schedule. Well, elections don't work around your schedule. You work around an election schedule.
And I think with the full-time, because of the additional, the insurance and stuff like that, I think it's gonna be easier for me to get a full-time person. I can attract more experienced candidates for full-time versus part-time. And I don't wanna have to turn around every year and train somebody. I want somebody that was gonna wanna stay and retire with the county.
If you take out the part-time, the difference is $34,911, as far as just the benefits, without the medical insurance, if you include the medical insurance. The total goes from $107,644 increase to $79,240 increase.
We, we have part-time getting, part-time to run a mowing tractor. I can imagine where it'd be in elections, so I don't have any problem with that.
Just full-time or full-time man or part-time? Just full-time. Anybody else?
On your maintenance agreements?
Okay, so maintenance agreements, that is the election equipment, which is, and I added a little bit more because of the fact I didn't know if they were gonna end up going up next year or not. So ESNS is our election equipment. They do maintenance on our equipment every year. They update my iPads, and they're there if I need them, even on Election Day. So that's $11,306.25. Vista is our online filing cabinet, where I don't have to keep all those voter registrations, you know, the DPS applications. I scan them in, and we put it in that electronic filing cabinet. So that's $35,7585, a total of $1,482.10, without knowing if it's gonna go up next year or not.
Not sure there's gonna be electronic voting machines.
True. And we might not even have to use it.
Yeah. And, you know, everybody says they're not hackable because they're not online whenever you're voting. The problem is, whenever they're up, they are online.
Well, the, the iPads were just now, again, those are the only things that are connected to the internet. And we have to do a hash validation before every election, before early voting and Election Day, I have to do a hash, a hash validation, which is just electronic. I have to put these numbers into my hash iPad, not, that's not online. I have to insert the flash drives, and it's very time-consuming, very. It takes me about two days, just for, prior to early voting.
You need that change in there. I missed the maintenance agreements. Thanks for catching that. So that's $875,875.
And the reason it's so much is because the prior, this year, there was only $1,000 in the maintenance agreement.
We have already, according to the budget report that y'all have right now, it shows actually has, but remember, this was in Code 9. We've done another budget amendment since going to 10, so that's not reflective in there, because, so current, her current actual expenses in the maintenance agreement is like $14,000 something year to date, because we did one since we went to 10. Of a bill that we paid, we had to pay to ESS.
You're not, you're not at a level of budget agreement, not that we said.
Well, it only had originally at the beginning of this year, budgeted $1,000 in there, so we did a budget amendment in like January, February, and then the other bill came in, and we've done it since May, when we went live in 10. So she currently has, and when there, it doesn't show it fully because that's out of 9, not out of 10. I can't, I'm still, I haven't read all those reports. So y'all know, I'm out of 9 right now.
But my point is, she's up to $14,000.
Yes, and if it is increased, $14,000, okay.
That's only three grand.
And she's at 14,800, so.
Yeah.
Which is.
Which is two grand, basically, two grand. And, you need the election.
Everybody will be able to full-time?
Yes, you, you're right.
Yes, sir. Making these changes here. You already move on? Sure. All right, non-departmental. Angela will help me out here on some of the... So, emergency reserves, we put in a million and a half last year, we're gonna bring that down to a million. Postage increase of seven thousand, and when we, on these numbers that we're discussing, we can go along and see, what we did is we went around down the budget and looked at the last few years to see kinda what they're trending. And if they trended up, we increased it, if they trended down, we decreased it. Some of them we've had to shift funds to. Fuel and oil, looking over the last few years, you know, we increased it last year expecting a big increase, and we are not seeing that. So, uh, we decreased it down to a hundred and forty-five. It's a little lower than the last, than twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-four. We need to change that before we get to, uh, August, then we can. But we decreased that a hundred and five thousand. Copier supplies, increase fifteen thousand. Audit expenses are going up still, twelve thousand. Booking, bookkeeping expense, seven hundred dollars more, and...
That's due to the Maker Inc. and printers that we are using for all the checks. Required by the banks.
Yes. Your favorite one, appraisal district fees, increased. So what we saw with those is, we would budget so much based on, and we got their budget, based on their budget, and it turned out to be more than what we'd budgeted for. So we increased that a little more this year than what their actual budget shows, I believe.
I tried, but it's, it's very hard, every year it continues to be more than what we can even like, just try to be able to estimate what they're gonna go up. Cause it's, this last year went up over eighty thousand more than it was the year before, so... For us, for the county.
Can we contest that?
You all can, and other agencies can, that you're gonna have to have.
Their merit raises is ridiculous.
Well, yeah.
Their salaries.
Well, yeah, and, he's claiming that everybody's just, oh, yes, for...
That's okay, she doesn't have one.
Exactly. It's gonna go over budget.
It's spread out to the other.
It's gonna go over budget when she replaces her chief person by a hundred.
Is she going to?
Well, yeah.
Just asking. So we increased that to, um, four hundred and fifty thousand, an increase of seven hundred and fif- seventy, seventy-five thousand.
Wow.
I'm gonna have to agree, yeah.
Tell me if you want that on the agenda.
I will tell you, I'm gonna have to do a budget amendment this year to finish off this year because it's not enough. Where we have, we just paid, I think it's in the packet for Tuesday, there is a appraisal district fees that's coming, I think, Tuesday, and then we'll have one more quarter to pay out of this year. And we, I will have to do a budget amendment, we're lying on transfer to new funds that like, it's not enough.
Put it on the agenda.
But it is their budget to discuss. Communications, we increased that by a hundred thousand.
That was because of our, um, our website and email and all of that is all under communications, as well as the internet and all the phone lines. And now that we have the Office 365 with the majority, like, of the officials, the department heads and elected officials, this is a little bit higher of a plan. So, it, it has gone up. Yeah, it's everything, it's, it's internet, phone. Sort of, I mean, it was, I mean, we're in separate departments, and then 409 only paid for like the internet and, but now everything's up 409, so it's everything.
Yeah, it's solid, it's everything. Uh, we decreased maintenance and repairs by sixteen thousand eight hundred. We're just not getting to the amount, we're just not spending that much on maintenance and repairs. We did spend quite a bit in twenty-two, but we're not even getting close to that for the last few years. Delta Alert went down. I think we were just putting more than was necessary in there. Postage meter, that is, we put that in there with postage, so it just moved.
The Delta Alert thing broke away, was, they changed systems. It was, we, we pay a partial of it with the city, and they changed it from Delta to something else. And, um, it actually changed in twenty-three, but they were trying them out. It was a, uh, like trial basis, and now they're keeping them, so it is cheaper. At one point, it was, it was over two thousand, but it has gone down with the new system they use. Postage meter, we did include it up into postage expense, or whatever it was up here at the top.
Postage?
Maybe.
Okay, uh, property insurance is going up. It goes up every year with harness, it goes up, same with auto insurance. Cybersecurity, that was a new one. We didn't know what it would be, so we put fifteen thousand in there last year. It came in less than that, came in seventy-five hundred with, with the million-dollar, um...
Policy.
Policy that we have, so eight thousand's gonna cover that. We already know those numbers for next year. Well, official liability insurance, same thing, we were budgeting more than we needed on that, a pretty good amount, so we dropped it down to twenty-five from twenty-seven thousand, so a two-thousand-dollar decrease. And then, you know, we've increased, um, fluvanna, fire, and the museum, and the rural brush trucks over the last few years, and the historical commission, I don't think it has ever been increased, so requesting an increase to ten thousand from thirty thousand for them. Any thoughts on that?
Why such a big...
Then, it's just a number, I mean, what are your thoughts on that? What, what would you, you think? Anybody else?
What does their budget look like as far as, um, they're taking care of their little village out there?
That's a different, that's totally, totally different, yeah. Historical commission, uh, they go after grants, and they go, they, they go for the, uh, they do all the cemeteries. They have a cemetery committee that takes care of the cemeteries, uh, not mowing or anything like that, but, because the orange crew does those, but they take care of those. All of the historical markers, they have a committee that takes care of those. And so, finding those old buildings that don't have a marker or need some help, they try to get help for those buildings.
My God, I was five thousand, I was gonna screw.
Thank you, Sean, or Doug and Carrie, sorry.
Have they made requests? You just want to increase it because they...
Yeah, they do.
Everything's gone up.
Yeah, everything's gone up, and they haven't had an increase since we've been giving them money.
But they haven't, they haven't written official requests for any money, they don't. Well, historical property is very important, no doubt. They're, seems like they lost some, like the Johnson Ranch House is privatized now, even though it's got a historical marker on it.
Yep.
Lost Depot, lost the brown fruit.
Yeah.
So they try to make that. So five thousand?
I guess a, a good range.
Okay, everybody good on 409, non-departmental? So that's a decrease of three hundred and eighty, eighty-eight thousand six hundred dollars there. County and justice courts, there's no change to that. District court, they have, uh, an increase in administrative expenses, thirty-six hundred and ten dollars. Jury expense went up eighteen thousand, that's legislatively required. They may increase the amount they pay the juries, uh, and then increase in equipment of twelve hundred dollars, and then that's to replace their computers.
And the administrative expense was to cover the cost of the traveling judge, like Judge Armstrong when he drives from Waco to here, and any other judge that travels, their mileage rate, to increase in that.
Then part of the reason there is because there, because Judge Cooley was the district attorney for so long, there are still conflicts, she is not able to do so.
Did say that a lot of those are starting to fall off now, so she'll have less, but there's still, you know, some when they come up for probation review or different things like that, that she can't hear, so...
District judge.
District clerk, uh, the only change in hers is the cellular expense. JP one, no changes, JP two, twenty-eight hundred and fifty dollars in maintenance and repairs. Can you remind me about that?
Remind you what it is?
Yes, ma'am.
It is the postage maker. That expense that we had.
Yeah.
And also, we have, um, the shredding. We haven't done that before, but JP one has, and we've been using it also, so we're...
Okay.
Helping them with that. Splitting that.
Okay, and we'll talk about what you're wanting to do in the courtroom also, since we're, to y'all, you're wanting to...
Is that still gonna be added on, or used on that different line that we talked about?
Yeah. Yeah, that's out of, not out of your...
The justice court fund, the justice court fund.
The chairs, replacing the chairs and all, and that's fines and fees.
It's only fines and fees, it's not a tax line, it's all the ones that y'all do like for fines and fees.
But just to make you aware, they're replacing, chairs and anything else, or just the chairs?
Our chair and then chairs, the claim of independence and everything.
They literally are falling apart.
We've glued and reshaved and everything until they're not, they're not really safe to sit in.
Right.
Anymore, so...
They're doing that over there in JP's office. Y'all good with JP one and two? District judge, state salary supplement will change due to legislation. And that's the only change there.
District judge?
Yeah, so the, yes.
We don't pay for state.
No, but we do pay fringe out of that, that was in this letter as well. I think some of the friends that, do we pay any of that?
Only the county attorney, you, and that's it. We don't pay anything for the, we pay a stipend every month for a supplement that we pay, but it's, um, what the court, like, the, um, court chooses to increase or decrease it, and the, when Judge Armstrong was still here, I think it was in twenty-one, I think it went from, that's when it went to forty-two hundred a year. Prior to that, it had always been, it was thirty-six hundred for a long time, and then he did request. But, uh, it's never, I, I will have to research that.
Okay, I was basing it off this.
Yeah, I mean, we pay a fee, we pay the, to the Seventh District Court of Appeals and all of that kind of stuff. We pay annually to them, out of one of her lines.
Okay, then here he says that that also increases the account, the amount the counties may pay to the district judges as a supplement, so...
So we could increase that a number.
Potentially.
Because, I mean, it hasn't gone up since twenty-one. It's forty-two hundred a year we paid out monthly.
To?
Judge Cooley.
Okay, so a potential.
She gets that and then a, what is on that check? There's, it's a travel, juvenile board. Yeah, the juvenile board, the cell phone, I mean, not cell phone, juvenile board and the supplement. It's at the end of the month, she gets it, uh, but I have that same letter, so I will have it had time to read it.
Right, yeah.
I'll look over it and then give it to Judge Cooley, but, I mean, y'all could, I'm still waiting on the letters from the state to find out how much the supplements are gonna be for the county judge and the county attorney.
Right.
So, if y'all get those, I need those, a copy, so I have to.
Sure will, yeah, I didn't, I haven't gotten anything either, I just wanted to make it aware that...
Right.
That potentially could change, same with...
So I'll make a note.
County attorney and district attorney.
No, I have a copy in my, in my office, I just haven't had a chance to read it.
Court reporter, there's no change. Same thing with county attorney on the state salary supplement, the fringe and all of that. Uh, they're increasing their office supplies, five hundred dollars, education and training, seven hundred and forty-four. And then maintenance agreements, and bonds and notaries cancel each other out at a hundred and seventy-seven dollars. So, four hundred and forty-four increase for county attorney.
One thing y'all will notice, um, just so when y'all are reading through it, I am budgeting the SB twenty-two funds into, like, for county attorney, district train, I'm budgeting them into the SB twenty-two salary line. It might be a line I'll transfer to cover the friends related to, like, Bailey and Dennis. But to budget it out because it's, I mean, and if we don't get it, then it, it zeros out. I'll budget the SB twenty-two grant money, and I'll budget the SB twenty-two funds into the expense lines.
District attorney, uh, office supplies increased, eighteen hundred and fifty dollars, law books, um, two thousand, we'll talk about that a little bit, auto expenses, forty dollars. Looking at, on law books, um... Right now, we get them hard copies, and we get supplements put in all the time. That is over, well, between what we do, what county attorney does, and what, uh, the district attorney gives, and the district judge, it's over sixty thousand a year. More than, and whatever you buy, yeah.
Play code, family, civil code.
Yeah, so, although, the whole... Yeah, so the whole court system gets different, everybody buys something for that. What we're looking at is an online version of that, the LexisNexis or somebody else and they're, it's less than half that. So it's about twenty-two thousand for seven offices and it includes a, a public portion. So we could set up a kiosk, a computer somewhere in the courthouse where the public can go to that and they can look up whatever they want, so it's just for them. But the other side is, I think, there's seven different offices that would have access and it's about twenty-two thousand. So I'm working with all of those, including the JPs, that would be involved in potentially getting this LexisNexis to see if that's something they're agreeable to. I did send an email. Any questions on County Attorney or District Attorney? Auditor and Treasurer, no changes. Y'all want to talk about that? Just kidding. Tax Collector, increase of four thousand and postage nine thousand in maintenance and agreements or maintenance agreements, a decrease in a thousand dollars in bonds and notary and capital expenditures down six hundred and seventy-eight dollars, that was ordered.
It was the finishing up of the remodel of some of the things that she had ordered. That's what that was.
I'll get that today, you know what I'm talking about. Any questions on the Tax Collector?
I attached the maintenance agreement in my budget thing to show that it had gone up.
Which one is that for?
That's for the collection software and that's all the legislative changes that they have to make, all the changes in the software and we get the...
Right.
We get to pay for that.
What's that for?
Here are these bills that they pass and you have to have it fixed within like ten days, you know, after it passes, so we can start our stuff. And then work all the bugs out.
That they created. Any questions? IT, down three thousand dollars for equipment. Maintenance, there's several things looking at there. The general supplies is up sixteen hundred dollars, elevator maintenance is two hundred dollars more and then capital expenditures, another forty-six thousand. So Todd got a quote from somebody for the doors, two sets of doors at the annex and then there's sliding doors, right?
Yeah.
Okay, and then looking at masonry work at the Health Department and then staple mulch for the courthouse that should be rocked. Something along those lines.
What about the doors at the annex?
Yeah, so I was given all that and then going back to that. So, yeah, you got the quote for the doors to push the button and all of that and you wanted to discuss that to some extent.
Well, I can understand about the push button thing and stuff, but the people that we have that come into MHMR, I mean, my, my girls are constantly having to go help them in. There, these people that are coming in there, there's not going to be any way that they can push a button and get in those doors before those doors close. It's just not going to be convenient for them. If we have the doors that slide open, then they could be right there and just go through. Plus, if you've got where the, if you've got it where both those doors swing open, I can't tell you how many times that we've got there in the morning and the doors are unlocked and all it's going to take is one time for somebody to realize that that building's unlocked and they are gonna have a heyday with it. But the main thing is, people that come into MH, and these are MHMR people, there's just no way they're going to be able to hit a button and then get positioned where they can go through those doors before they close them.
There's no way to set timer for a longer period of time?
I don't know.
I don't have any problem with sliding doors, but your office is directly in front of those doors and you have anybody move, those doors are going to be open and closing constantly. We've had that here and I finally figured out a way to kind of mediate that by putting tape on there where they're at the tax assessor's office and it was just, any movement at all, they're open, close, open, close, open, close. And so kept putting it on there until we got that done, but it's straight in, in front of it, like y'all's office is. You can't do that and that's going to be a problem, I think.
I think we're going to have problems either way, but it's just that they...
If there's a timer that you can set, surely there's a length of time that you could put there for those things to open.
The doctors' offices and hospitals, their doors stay up well, I'm sure there's some like, and my doctor's office, that door stays up a long time.
Let me talk to the ones who give the bill for bearing, because that was my fault if you could set, they got, you got that way to sell them.
Sure. Makes sense.
So let me get with him. And I will get back to y'all.
Sounds good.
Do either one of them lock up all the messes with the timer?
Oh, no, they lock them, they lock them every day. You lock the doors every day, I mean, before you leave?
That's the responsibility of either the annex people.
I mean, here.
Well, here, yeah.
Yeah, they're going to automatically lock them.
No, these don't. The only problem there is, you know, if MHMR, which they're on the other side of the building, if it slips their mind that they need to go lock it, then they end up with an unsecure field.
And they go out the back door.
Always been, always been.
There's one or two days a month that they stay until like seven o'clock in the evening. So they want the doors open in the front for their people to come in and out and not have to use their back door. And I mean, there's been multiple times that we come up there Friday morning. Normally it's Thursday when they stay late, we'll come in Friday morning and the building's open. You know, there's been, Judge Webb said, multiple weekends that it's been open all weekend. One Sunday, I went up there on Sunday afternoon and the hall lights were on, doors were open, just like we're having open hours.
I don't, I don't know if that can be done with the swinging doors. I don't have any experience with those.
You mean automatic locks?
Yes, the automatic swing doors instead of the sliding doors.
And then when we're in there on the weekends, which we are periodically because there are things that come up that we have to go take care of, whether it be autopsy stuff or whatever. And I've had to have PD come and clear the building because it was open and I wasn't going to go in there because, I mean, there's plenty of places for people to hide.
Sure. Maybe MHMR needs a sign, a red sign, flashing signs that says, lock the doors if you want them open during past operating hours, lock the doors before you leave. And if they won't do that, then there's, there's got to be something else done. I mean, you just got to lock them and say, I'm sorry. Let your, let your patients come in through the back door like you do so that you know to lock the door. I mean, you, you can't allow that, not continue.
So Judge Webb and I have had this conversation and it sounds like it's been worked on from three different directions on that. I did get a quote from Guardian on installing ADA, the Access Control Push Button. And I looked that up and it's a minimum of five seconds, but it can be adjusted, minimum, a minimum of five seconds ADA requirement. But I also asked them about those door mag locks like we have throughout. They did give a quote on doing all of that, but if the button's already installed, that's not, that's going to change the amount. So with the, for those locks and everything else, or those locks and...
Those doors are the only security we have and we have a lot of stuff that goes on down there with MHMR. There was a guy that was assaulted in the front yard and left out there like, I mean, it's, we're constantly having to call the PD to come over there and deal with an irate person and sadly enough, the first office they see when they come in there is mine. So, you know, the doors is the only security we really have and they're not secure now, so.
With mag locks, you can set a timer on so that you open them, they open and close at certain times or unlock and lock at certain times.
True.
That's something that has, I've, I've got several that I'm looking at or that I've got listed out that you can go over and that was one of them, was your front door. And now if we're already getting the buttons, I need to get in to adjust that. But the total was eighteen thousand dollars for those mag locks and a few other things.
Well, I mean, you know, how much does our security worth to you?
I already got the price, so it's...
If we keep finding bodies out in the country.
We'd be glad for somebody to do a ride along with us sometime when we go do something like that. If you're interested, just give us a call.
I'm not going to say anything about that because it's been lingering, a couple of things have been lingering.
Shoot, I like to sleep at night.
So do we.
You're taking some kind of volume value or something if you are.
Well, actually, it's just what you, it's just how you end up. This was the job, you learn to feel what's all around you that you're just like, you, I mean, you can look at it just like the officers do.
PT, SD.
Put it in a box and throw it in the lake. The lake in your mind, it'll be, it'll pop up later.
Push it down.
Congratulations to you.
Not the body, not how you do it.
I'm not really sure we know either.
I can imagine.
Masonry work at the Health Department, let's talk about that. You, you're suggesting, which masonry work?
The grout is pretty much the same thing we did at the library. The grout starts to deteriorate over time. He'll refill the grout and he'll seal everything, put a seal on. That's basically what it is.
Right, and this ties into Kyle's request to get into leveling, which we'll get into at the next meeting. But we got a quote from somebody for over a hundred thousand dollars, I think it was a hundred and twenty thousand dollars to do the leveling. He then, the guy that gave that quote said that when he levels it, it's going to create all kinds of other issues with the walls and everything else, which key a big expense. So since Butler Cohen is here, I asked them to throw together the worst case scenario for us and let us know potentially what could happen if we leveled the building. And so they're working on that and I need to follow up and see where they stand on that. But that's been a couple of weeks ago, I asked them for that, just so we know if we do leveling, what's, what's the rest of it going to be? And then that would tie in with, you know, fixing mortar and measuring all that. Any questions on maintenance? Any concerns? The sliding doors, is that something y'all want to look at or look at the mag locks or on the doors that we have? Or how do y'all want, you want more information or?
Like the sliding door for, I don't think it...
Think, well, you already answered the question on them being on a timer, they should be able to hold open a little bit longer. It sounded like we need to go talk to MHMR and tell them if they're going to use that door, that you make sure they lock it or quit using it, change the locks, going to do them a key.
Now, if you put mag locks on it, they don't have a little black fob, fob that they carry around, they're, they're done anyway.
How do you tell them to quit using it? If you can't lock it, quit using it.
A mag lock will stop them.
Because they got to come in somehow.
They come in from the side, they come in the way they come in.
Well, that would have been great to begin with, but hey.
If we can't have security, if they won't help us with security, then we can't allow them to use the doors that they use their back door.
Also don't pay anything for the use of the building, so.
Exactly.
And I can reach out to us Texas Centers, Rodney, about that. Yeah, to see if the timer can be left or if it can be adjusted from a minimum of five seconds to say ten seconds.
You might ask them about mag locks.
Sure, yeah, see if they have a test. If it's a fob though and it's a different fob, I don't know if it would work or it would be, you know, they might have, annex might have to have two fobs, which I don't know, maybe you can put one right next to the other and I'll figure it out. All right, we'll move on to jail and the Sheriff's Department DPS, there's no change. They have a new employee, did they hire somebody? Jail increase in food, which happens every year, ten thousand dollars, contract labor increase, five thousand dollars, doctor medical fees an increase of ten thousand dollars, prisoner transfer, you wanted to increase that twenty-five hundred and then capital expenditures went down seventy-three thousand. So we want to talk about the jails real quick.
Prison, they, the contract labor might not go, I'm still talking with them about our contracts, so that we might not need that fob. Doctor medical fees, that, it just, that is what it is, we can't control that. We're doing one more all the time, so I try to keep that to a bare minimum. I do as many of them as I can, but with my people, but sometimes when they're across the country, that just isn't feasible, so. Other than that, that's, that's it. I guess that seventy-three is, is that, is that coming out of SB twenty-two?
No, that's...
No, that was your regular number one.
Yeah.
Not your fifty-ten, but your fifty-seven-ten.
Okay.
I forget what it was, was that your boilers? Or I don't remember.
Yeah, it was sixty, that's...
Seventy-two, five-eight-three is what we spent, I think that's your boilers.
Yeah, that's right, yeah, that's right.
And then your department, I did that two different ways because adding a deputy, the fuel and oil. Everything, including the additional deputy, is three hundred and fifty, three hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars and that includes remainder of the SB twenty-two grant. So you get three hundred and fifty thousand from SB twenty-two and without that, the, the difference is three thousand dollars total. And so fuel and oil, a thousand dollars, tires, two thousand dollars, operating supplies, seven thousand dollars and these are all increases, education and training, ten thousand dollars, communications down two thousand, capital outlay down twenty thousand. And that was your best, or one of those, I think. And so I wanted that separate because the SB twenty-two is funds that is not taxed. And so I wanted that separate because the SB twenty-two is funds that is not tax dollars, it's coming from the state. And that's where you want to add the mental health deputy and use the remainder of those funds on equipment.
Yeah, and twelve thousand of it goes on the crime victim advocate person as well.
So, I, I just wanted to make that clarification as far as differences in there. And the reason for the mental health deputy is we, we have been having some major issues and they keep growing. We have more and more crisis calls. Mental health deputy would be a way to mitigate a lot of that. So that's all they do is, is mental health. They go out and they check on people that are, are using mental health services to see, to make sure that they're not headed towards crisis, make sure they're taking their meds, that they are, you know, not getting into things that they don't need to be getting into. And if a crisis call does come, that's the person that goes with them. And one of the major issues we're having is not finding a bed for somebody who is in crisis. If we can catch them before they go into crisis, we don't have to worry about can we, do we need to put them in a bed, find a bed somewhere. Trey, do you want to talk to this at all?
No, I mean, that's, that's it, and I could utilize them, you know, they can do that, I could, I could use them in both directions. If we're not, if we're not, if they're not doing that, I can utilize them somewhere else. But that, that would be the main thing is to, maybe we can, because it is getting absolutely out of control with what we're dealing with these people, it's just more frequent, it's, we need, we need to do something different.
So, it'll, it'll be a patrol deputy, just more training.
Same thing. And they, and they will, they will go out with, they have a program, I think, to do it in Howard County where they go out with a, a caseworker and they go visit these people, make sure they're on their meds. They say it's very, I haven't seen it firsthand, but they say it's very successful over there, so.
Yeah, I think Burtonson County has that as well. Burtonson County, and they've seen positive gains, keeps people out of jail. You know, we had a situation not too long ago, two or three months ago now, where a guy went into jail, he was in crisis when he went in, couldn't find a bed, couldn't get a bed, couldn't get a bed. So we tested the system. Guy wasn't eating, drinking, he was doing things that he was not in his right mind. We tested the system, I signed an order to send him to a facility, and the state law says that if a judge signs an order, they have to take him. They interpret that differently. And it says, you shall take him. They interpret it differently. They locked our deputy in the foyer, wouldn't let him leave unless he took that person.
They, they locked the deputy up.
Yeah, they did let him out, they did let him out. The deputy didn't leave, but went back. And when he went back, they had released the guy and he was out there chewing on a tree.
Yeah, they turned, they walked him out the public.
And we picked him up and brought him back to the jail. He went further into med, he went into medical crisis at that point.
I could call E M O's.
Took him to the hospital. M H M R was saying we need to bring him down out of crisis, this mental crisis, to get him placed. But he's in medical crisis also. It made no sense whatsoever. You know, so you're too much in crisis to go into a facility. Doesn't, that doesn't make sense to me. Eventually, well, went to go pick him up one day and the doctor had given him a medication that knocked him out. They went to transporting, when they got him there, they said, we can't take him because he has to walk in on his own. He couldn't because of the medication.
Or you have people in California shooting up on the sides, on the sidewalks. Because they treated with drugs like that, street drugs, they handed out because they don't want to deal with it. And then they wonder why you've got someone to have high medical crisis, mental health crisis.
Well, maybe you should let him chew a tree a little while.
So I, I called the legislator on that one and I told him what was going on. And he said, well, we just allocated money for new beds in the last session, two years ago. But the problem with that is that they still have to build those facilities and that takes multiple years to do. So, they're in process of, of building more facilities for these people, but in the meantime, we need to be able to help them. If we could, if, if they could have gotten to this person before he went that far into crisis, he may not have ever been in jail or had the issues with the facility. And we've had it come up again since then, a couple of times. So, we're trying to get rid of that problem by adding a mental health deputy.
I agree with it.
You can keep them out of jail, you're better off.
Well, you said that SB twenty-two is going to pay for it, didn't you?
Yes, yeah, that, the salary and everything, even though I can buy the additional equipment needed for that person. Yeah, yeah, but that, there's plenty of funds for all of that, it would not be budgeted at all.
And the state did budget for the SB twenty-two for the coming two years.
Will they do two or just one? Two, is it two? Twenty-six, twenty-seven?
All right, any questions for Trey? We'll move on to boot camp, they bought a vehicle, so their, last year they won't need any capital outlay this year. Juvenile is no change. Supervision, six hundred dollars in audit expense, four thousand in maintenance and repairs. What they want to do is workshop over by the jail behind it, that's where with an orange crew at the time, that where, are they trustees worked out of it? Yeah, it's a maintenance shop, trustees worked out of it, now orange crew uses it. It's a tarp for a roof that needs to be replaced. They want to fix the garage door and add some lighting to it, there's no lighting inside there, so they want to do some repairs for that. Capital outlay is replace the awning and the sign at the probation office. Or add an awning, I don't think it has an awning. I don't think they want to.
They want to add.
Add an awning, add an awning and redo the sign, no problem with that. Mental health, we are deleting that because it's inactive. And that's as far as we moved into the other day, and we'll go into some of the others that are minimal on the other departments. Welfare was a hundred and ten dollars difference.
God, you've done a great job.
And any fair, we can go over her.
Don't even ask with me.
Okay, we will call that good today.
When do we get to the Fluviana Volunteer Fire Department?
What do you, what would you like to know about Fluviana Fire, that's in four oh nine?
Four oh nine?
Yes, sir, that, so we do.
We covered it earlier.
Yeah. Well, Fluviana Volunteer Fire Department, you know, we started out around twenty-fourteen with a five thousand dollar a year grant from a mutual aid agreement with Curry County. If you figure three percent a year, which is just supposed to keep up with inflation, that would make it needing to be around seven, just to be where we started out at. So, all of that kind of stuff, like Fluviana, you know, we're not, we're, we're below where we started. And, and the grass keeps growing and the tires keep popping and all the stuff.
We're in the desert, we don't have any grass. We're in the desert, we don't have any grass.
Yeah, well, I'll tell you what, we've had a fairly wet grass growing season and as y'all know, it'll all come to a head. We've actually got by really, really good in the last few years, but, but all it takes is one to wipe you out. Just a thought.
So you're, you're wanting to go from five to seven, is that what you're saying?
I think so, because that's just three percent a year compounded, you know, to where we are today. And that's, that just gets us back to where we, back to where we were, back to even around. I don't have a problem with that.
Did we start doing that in two thousand nineteen or twenty?
On the year shows twenty-three is when we first did the actual separate, like made its own line. For Fluviana Fire, because I would have to like in the computer system to see like how long they've been paying out.
I was thinking it was around fourteen.
I, I was thinking it was, you know, we had that conversation my first year, that Borden County was, but we weren't.
Right.
Remember that?
Right.
And so, that would have been two thousand nineteen for the twenty.
We had donated an, an entity, an old fire truck or whatever.
Maybe I lied.
No, it's misremembered.
But no, I was thinking it was about the time I moved back here, it would have been about fourteen when we started, but I could be wrong. I have been wrong.
Me too, and I, you know, I could absolutely be way older than that. Okay.
Unless we painted in the brush truck line, the Fluviana line, uh, twenty-twenty-three, there was five thousand paid, twenty-twenty-four, five thousand three ninety-eight. I mean, that's it, but it could have been budgeted, paid out of the either maintenance and repair line or the rural brush truck line. I would have to look up the actual name to see.
There's a rural brush truck. You, you told, you told them to request it.
Well, the rural brush truck was ours to begin with. It belongs to Fluviana Volunteer Fire Department. Somehow, it got commandeered by volley and crew and wound up at the county barn. All we did is took our property back.
Where'd all that come up, which one we did, five thousand?
Yes, around that, yeah, yeah, we kind of, that's when we get our.
Seventeen, eighteen, something like that, and I may be wrong.
Yeah, maybe. All right, so are we changing that to five thousand? All right, seven thousand? We're going to change it from five thousand to five thousand.
You got to do what you got to do.
In two cents?
Two cents.
Angela's ignoring you, you're normal. Okay, a couple of the things real quick. So, there are a few things that we need to look further into. Computers to upgrade, when we first looked at that, it was sixty-six thousand dollars. There are some that are replacing their computers, that's going to go down, but we need to get a more streamlined number on where that's going to be. Vehicles for parks and maintenance. It's not in their budget, but it's in the list that I have for, for our vehicle, replacing vehicles as we go forward. So, airport, parks and maintenance, all have those. And I think airport, that fifty thousand that you were, didn't have notes in there, I think that was for the vehicle, I think.
Yeah, 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 I think you're right.
So, and then upgrades to the camera systems. I, I got with Guardian and these are the amounts that they have come up with for upgrades. And of course, on a couple of them, they didn't give quotes for cameras inside, which they need, the senior center. The library has theirs and their, and the youth center. I'm wanting one of those locks on my door, we can use what we have, but that's the quote for that. The golf course, really need some cameras out there to keep people honest, because we've had some theft in the past. You wanted cameras out at yours, that's their quote for there, fifteen thousand.
We can take that one off, try to get it cheaper somewhere else.
Okay, we need to move the cameras for the voting and that, we're looking at through the hub grant. Health department cameras, eleven thousand. And then park bathroom door, door locks. So we put those locks on those doors for the trail. The only, there's an issue with them in that if you use them, you're going to have to use a slide lock inside, I don't like that. I think it should be where you can still lock the door, but it mag locks after hours. But the, the rest of the bathrooms should be okay if we were to do something like that, the mag lock on those doors. So that's the total cost of that, but you said not for yours. And that's something to think about as we go forward. And then a line striping machine, Todd has to go out there with a brush and roller. We have lots of parking lots, it just makes sense to, to me to buy a line striping machine at minimal expense. It probably pay for itself within a year. And then, that's the amount. So if, with all of the requests through all of the departments, it's a decrease without, this is just a request. This is not the entire budget, it's just a request. It's a decrease in thirty-five thousand dollars. On those that are not listed in the budget that we just discussed, it's a total increase of three hundred and thirty-one thousand minus whatever I just took out on the other page. Or, I'm sorry, it's two hundred and ninety-five thousand right here, because you take the, all requests from those items and it's two hundred and ninety-five. And then for this three hundred thousand, and that's the courthouse planning, that's the grant phase. If we decide to, excuse me, go out for the second phase of the grant for the courthouse, that's the amount. And that would be taken from, my idea, my thought is to take it from Fund Twenty-nine, from the abatements and not use tax dollars on that. And then cover the remainder of the master plan. Invenergy has said that they will give five thousand dollars, they just were awarded twenty thousand dollars in hot funds. Let me decrease the size of that a little so I can see it. And then there's a raffle, there will be a raffle, potentially ten thousand dollars. And then T-Mobile grant was applied for in the amount of fifty thousand dollars and won't go on that one until August. For the master plan. Yeah, all of those, the Invenergy, the hot funds, the raffle, the T-Mobile grant is all for the master plan.
And the master plan was eighty-five?
Eighty-seven-five. They're looking at other ways to get funds for that. They will come back to us at the end of July to let us know how much they have accumulated, received. Some, some things to think about, we can discuss those all at the next meeting. We can discuss them now if you like.
Here's something to think about too. Fluviana is getting viral office, I don't know if anybody knew that. It would probably be something to maul over is whether we allow Fluviana people to be, to vote in the Fluviana area yet at some point in time, because it, you know, it's kind of a big deal for people to have to drive to Snyder and vote, especially older people like myself. Just a little something to maul over there.
Which probably isn't anywhere else, it even has wifi, because it would have to have wifi.
We didn't have anything, we barely had telephone.
Yeah, you have to have wifi.
Actually, our telephone's better than Snyder, I'll be really honest with you.
You got a tower right there.
I know.
Right in the middle of town, right?
Yeah, I can see it, when it works, it works good.
Y'all good for now?
Do you like to do a joke?
Bernie, I'll have enough for that.
Yes, we do.
All right. Back to the agenda, we don't have any line out of transfer budget amendment, that counts payable, we don't have an executive session, so we move to the.